Well, it is two o'clock and Mike's not here, but I think for the, due to the schedule, we probably ought to go ahead and get started. So, first thing we have on the agenda today is the sales tax fund review. Debbie? And before we get started, I had a quick question. Are you gonna do, are you gonna do these, are you gonna do these in the order that you have them in the packet? Because is the third one...
The third option?
Well, the one that's the sales tax goes away completely on page 12.
Mm-hmm.
That would be under the current scenario. Is that correct?
That is not, well, it is and it isn't. The third, the one that on page 10 is kind of the current scenario where we had anticipated debt financing.
Okay, okay. I'll let you go, because I have, okay.
We got some options.
Okay, we'll go ahead.
So, good afternoon. My name's Debbie Pack, the Director of Finance. Today, we are going to talk about the special sales tax fund, the view of that fund, and kind of where we are headed in some of the projects that we're, have funded out of that fund. Just because there's a lot of moving parts in this fund, we want to make sure we're on top of it, and we also want to make sure, as Commissioner Frands let us know, and thankfully, said if you need to be watching for this, is that this is set to sunset in 2036, and we're issuing debt that's going to be on that now. So, we need to be careful about what we're doing so that we're not putting that debt on this future commissions or whatever, because we really don't know what's going to happen at that time. So, I really, I won't go over the first few pages in very much detail, but I just wanted to provide you kind of an overview of where sales tax has been in the city of Salina. This particular sales tax was passed in October, April of 2016. It replaced a prior sales tax of .4 percent. This one went to .75 percent. It went into effect on October 1st of 2016, which meant that we started collection of the, a distribution of this would have been in November of 2016. So, then what I also wanted to cover was, and my people, we put out a lot of marketing data on the, on the increase in the sales tax, we being the city of Salina, when we put this out to vote, to the public. And so, this article in the Salina Citizen was really one of the biggest pieces of marketing that we did, and I just wanted to kind of reiterate what those promises have been, because as we go along, we start spending money out of this fund, we're constantly looking at, does this meet something that we thought we intended to do when we, when we established this increase in sales tax? So, as part of that, we've had several conversations about increasing the street funding by $2 million to neighborhood streets. We've talked about property tax stabilization of $500 to a million, $500,000. Parks increases of, I have 390, we have a $500,000 in our allocation. I took this number just based on the percentage that was shown in the marketing plan. The River Project Renewal, which is one that we really are starting to look at a lot, because we're getting closer and closer to construction in that project. The, there's two different pieces of marketing that we have that are kind of conflicting to each other, but they're not a lot different, but they're a little bit different. This particular marketing piece says that we will dedicate one point, up to $1.3 million a year that was previously dedicated to the Kenwood Cove debt service. Something to mention with that is that, that debt does not pay off until 2020. So, we have a partial payment of debt of that $1.3 million in 2020, so we have a little bit of a balance. So, as we're looking at what was our real promise to the citizens, we kind of have, had to take that into consideration. We expected that the sales tax would increase our revenue by about $4.3 million a year.
Let me back up just a minute. The aquatic center pays off in 2020, and if our commitment was $1.3 million a year, that would be over the succeeding 16 years.
Correct. That's how we calculated. That's correct.
And we have incurred river expenses in advance of the aquatic center payment.
Sure, yeah, I, I get that.
Yeah. And we also promised some things with jobs and, which we are, we have 3.9 percent, which is going to our Economic Development Fund from sales tax revenue, so that's part of that, supporting new jobs in the community. So, this next page is really just another review of what those priorities were. Improving streets, stable property tax, ensuring quality park systems, maintaining capital improvements, you'll see that with our equipment and vehicle purchases, payment of future bonds for large projects, and attracting quality projects.
A quick question, and this, I don't know if this is more for Mike or Debbie, but the list that, the order that these items are listed in here, did we, have we ever established a priority system within the sales tax proceeds? I mean, when you look at this Salina Citizen, it looks like the biggest emphasis was placed on streets, but have we ever established a priority list within these things that were identified?
The easy answer to that is no.
Okay.
I mean, I think we've looked at this trying to accomplish all of these.
Right.
And we've had, as part of our budget conversation, we had some conversations about dialing back some of those, and in a sense, we didn't want to do that. But we, we have yet to have any conversation about, you know, one of these taking priority over another.
I would agree with that, because I didn't see anything in either the resolutions or the marketing data that put one thing over the other.
Right.
So, on this page, page five, this is where we kind of broke down the numbers. If we've promised 1.3, or, and, and the reason I said there was two different numbers, if you look at the frequently asked questions on the, on the city's website, the number's quoted as 1.35 million dollars. So, I put both numbers out there so that we kind of had an idea of where, where our numbers were going to fall. So, basically, what I did is I took what we had left available in 2020 after we paid the debt on the Kenwood Cove, I added a 1.3 or 1.35 million dollars a year till 2036. I did not prorate 2036, because that collection should go through November, because our last, it will, it will sunset on September 30th of 2036, but we won't actually get that money until November. So, we're kind of two months behind. So, I didn't prorate that number at all. So, that means anywhere between 21.8 and 22.7 million dollars is what we committed to, but what we have to remember is that is a debt payment.
Right.
That's not a project cost payment. So, we have to back into those numbers to figure out, okay, how much would this fund, as far as the project's concerned? So, based on the 17-year financing structure, we figured that number to be anywhere between 14.8 and 15.5 million dollars.
Question, just, I get that. How is it that in the capital improvements program, we ended up with a $20 million project?
We authorized $27 million when we did the authorization for the project.
Okay.
Assuming that the core would pick up $10 million of that. I don't know if I'm answering your question or not.
Well, not directly, because if you look at the initial construction costs for the, the stuff that's in the CIP, plus the stuff we've already paid for, it totals 20 million upfront investment, and that's quite a bit more than 14.8 that we can afford to do.
Yeah.
Okay?
And that's what we're working at here.
That's, 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 that's something else, I think we've got to talk about.
Yeah. And that's one of the reasons we're having this discussion.
That's a real significant change.
In fact, the conclusion of this is we're going to ask you if you can meet at 1:30 next week to start talking about that.
Okay.
And is this based on a, when you look at the debt servicing, did I see somewhere that's based on a 4% interest rate?
We typically estimate our payments at a 4% interest rate, which is a little higher than what we're getting now. So, that's a very conservative number when we look at the differences in the numbers that we have estimated and what comes in an actual, yes.
So, with the proviso that we are receiving the $10 million from the core, we're looking at a total project ranging from 24.8 to 25.5? That's the scope of work we're looking at at this point?
If we, if the core comes through with $10 million.
If the core comes through, yes.
And if the interest rate was four, how would that change the numbers? Do you have any, have you done any eyeballing of that?
No, but it, it does change it, but not significantly. I mean, it's a couple of percent, but it depends on which portion you're funding, what year, and things like that. So, it could be a couple million dollars is basically what, what you could be looking at. If we come in and we get a bond for 1.6 million dollar, or 1.6% compared to what we estimated at four, on a seven or $10 million bond, that could be a lot of money, that could be $2 million. So, you know, it could have a huge difference depending on what those numbers look like. That's why, as we look at these numbers, and we look at kind of where we think the shortfall is, we'll talk about can we manage to those things, will, are those really realistic estimates and things like that? This number just shows us, what we expected was $4.3 million. We did, we did not collect that additional amount in 2018, 2017 or 2018, however, we did, we did collect that in 2019. We were about 3% over that number. I will say the 2020 numbers, we have two months' worth, are looking good so far, knock on wood as we say that, because they changed so rapidly, but they are, they are trending a little bit up at this point, so.
And originally, we had budgeted for a 2% annual increase in our sales tax.
In 2019.
In 2019.
In 2020, we did not, we only budgeted for a 0.5% increase in 2020.
But you all say, say in here somewhere that the Lambert's addition being paid off will generate about $100,000 additional in addition to this money.
It's included in these tables.
It's included in those tables.
Okay, that was, okay.
It's not included in this table, because this particular table, because we didn't collect that, we won't collect that in 2019.
Right.
But going 2020, go forward. I did put that number in.
It does calculate into the other tables, okay.
Yes, I did, yes.
And I presume that is only for the, the special sales tax portion of that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. It's a little more than I expected of that, so that's...
Nice to pay off early, too.
Yeah, it is.
So, we wanted to give you the picture of kind of where we were in the, when we did the capital improvement, kind of what our assumptions had been going forward till we got to this, you know, we need to really take a look at this moment. In the table that you see on page eight, these are the assumptions, that the blue stuff is things that we've already either committed to through our debt financing, or we've already spent. So, we have some actual numbers in there for 2018 and 2019. The blue that is the row, the columns, that is debt service that's actually been issued, bonds that have been issued. The revenues, like I said, do assume only a 0.5% growth annually after 2020.
Okay, great.
And this assumption is kind of what we had been going along, looking at all along, was that the sales tax would be renewed in 2036. Whether that's an accurate assumption or not, that's what had been done in the past, so we wanted to just kind of show what those numbers look like. And I do add in, in 2020, that the Lambert's does pay off this summer, and we should expect to get about $100,000 a year in addition to that, to, into this fund. Something else that we had, that questions have come up is, what do we spend, what's the $650,000 that we transfer to the debt service fund? That is for the projects that are listed on page seven. Those were specifically in, in the pieces of data that I found that this would, these would be allocated to those projects. Those projects do pay off in 2036. They were all debt that was issued in tw- in the same year that the, the tax was issued. So, it was kind of, they were, this was allocated to kind of help pay for those projects. The rest of the assumptions, the downtown streetscape, we've issued bonds of a little over $10 million. The police training facility, we anticipate, we have not, but we will anticipate issuing debt of about $5.9 million. And then the River Renewal Project assumptions, that we will debt finance all of the portions that we've had to date, which is the preliminary design, the final design, construction, the, the water storage, and the trail. So, we left all of those debt financing assumptions in this model. So, in this model, we can see if we continue to collect sales tax, and we never take that 0.75 away, this, we would anticipate that the fund balance never goes below zero, and in fact, as this debt gets paid off, continues to grow for future use. So, then on the next set of data, set of assumptions, on page nine, we want to look at what happens if this, the sales tax does actually sunset in 2036.
Let me back up. It looks to me like on all of the river debt, you have assumed they shortened that term to match the sunset?
Yes.
And those are the increased amounts, then, that that requires?
Yes.
And on the first page, you say the Phase One, 2021, construction is $5 million?
Yes.
In the CIP, it's listed as seven?
Yes.
Okay. I just, you know, I'm a, I'm a, I was very confused looking at this, because I couldn't make the numbers line up.
Yes, that's true. And a lot of that has to do with what we know now, as far as the scheduling and what, what's happening in the project, which we'll talk about a little bit next week. And we don't anticipate, we approved that $7 million for 2020.
Right.
There's not going to be construction in 2020 from what it says. Now, there's going to be some final design, so that's why we kind of scaled back those numbers a little bit.
So, next week, we're really going to, to look at the River Project?
Yes, we do.
Because maybe some of these questions need to wait till that, but it, the longer we wait to get the River Project going, the later we, we bond it, the less we're really going to be able to do, because we're going to have fewer years to bond it?
Yeah, yeah.
Unless we set cash.
Unless we have cash. That's what I'm saying. I guess that's what we...
That's a big unless.
Yeah, so I guess that's for next.
And actually, depending on inflation cost, you might have more buying power if you pay cash.
If you pay cash instead of debt.
I was about to say...
That was my question.
And I don't want to get too bogged down in the River, and I'm sorry if you hadn't thought to finish. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead. That was my question.
Okay. And I'm, since I'm not going to be here next week, I apologize for throwing this out, but I know that we've looked at our transient guest tax as a funding source for the baseball fields, and just kind of trying to think of this outside the box as we were looking through this, I was wondering if maybe we had ever had any thoughts, because to me, a lot of the key to Salina in the, in the future, and as a, as a destination and a place where people live, it all revolves around the River. And I want to keep this funding as intact as we can, and I wondered if we ever looked at it like, as a, as a way to, we could use transient guest tax as a way, I think this, you know, I, I know we've committed thus far to the ball fields, but I was trying to think, maybe we turn it around, and maybe we get some funding for the River from the transient guest tax, and we figure something out for the baseball diamonds, or have another thought about that. But just something I wanted to throw out there as I was...
We can certainly crunch some numbers. I don't know...
I know, it, it, it won't generate enough to cover all the debt service, but it might generate some.
And I was just going to comment that often, if you can put cash in a project upfront, if you have the cash available, and it's, cash flows out into the future, you're better off doing that than trying to debt finance the whole thing. Because you can substantially impact your debt payments into the future, which actually make, might make money available down the road.
So, when, when Kenwood Cove is paid off, the dollars that we would have been debt servicing, will that go into like a sinking fund, so we'll know we have those dollars available?
No, they'll stay in this fund, because the, the money comes into the sales tax fund.
But will we earmark it? So, we, we need to earmark it, so we know, because I don't want it to get confused with something else, that we know where we're at, as far as what we have as spendable funds, if we're going to have to use cash instead of debt financing, so, okay.
We should, certainly.
Okay.
I'll go back to your transient guest tax question, and I don't have the real answer, but we do have some transient guest tax that's being allocated to debt on the Bicentennial Center.
Right.
I don't know when that all goes away, so I don't know if that, we'll, we can look at that as possible source. I don't know what the timing of that is.
Bicentennial Center debt, that was issued in 2011?
16, I think.
16, was that late?
Yeah, so I was thinking it didn't get done until by 2036.
I thought it was earlier, is it?
There was, there were several issues of debt, I think the last one might have been 2016. So, there's several issues.
But my understanding is the transient guest tax was dedicated to the first round we did, which was earlier than that, I think. Time flies when you're having fun, so...
I thought it was earlier than that, too.
So, the next set of assumptions we made is that the transit, or the sales tax would go away, we would not reelect to have that go back to, at any level for the special sales tax. The rest of the assumptions still stay the same, as far as the revenues and things like that.
But the debt terms aren't really adjusted here compared to the prior schedule?
They are.
They are?
Yes.
The ones that can be.
The ones that can be. The, we have two issues of debt that are currently already issued that are beyond 2036. We did not do any adjustments with those.
Okay, but I thought you just said that on this schedule, on the first round, it was, was revised to sunset at 2036.
All the debt is, is estimated to end at 2036 in the first set.
So, how, how is that different from the second set?
It's not.
It's not.
Okay, that was my question.
It's, that...
In other words, the second schedule is not different from the first schedule in that regard?
No, it's the same. It's exactly the same. The only thing that changes on the second schedule is the revenue, because the revenue then is not coming in after November of 2036. So, what that does to the fund balance in 2039, when we have to pay off the rest of the debt that we actually do have issued, it puts that in the hole at $1.8 million roughly. Now, what we did want to throw out there, that, that equates to about 1.35 mils if we had to go to the property tax section to pay that off. Also, if you look, if you think about that over the next 17 years, it comes to about $100,000 a year that we may have to manage to, or we have, may have to come up with these estimates that may shake out, because as you can see in this model, there's four debts of, there's six issuances of debt that we've assumed 4% interest that may change. We have assumptions on revenue that may change, so that, that number, we can't say that number's going to be that number. There's some possibility that number maybe is higher or lower. But if we were thinking about managing to that, to get to the point where we could pay all that debt, it would be about $100,000 a year that we'd have to manage that, to that number. Makes sense?
And the general fund stabilization goes from a million to 500,000.
We budgeted $1 million in 2020. We, in our marketing pieces, we said we, we would transfer 500,000 to a million. Typically, since I've been here, it's been 500,000. I will say about that one, that's, you know, it's a discretionary thing, that we always have that decision whether we transfer that to the general fund or not. All of these to the right of the debt service are, are the...
Here's my issue with that, and that is, if you look at the 2020 budget, it balances pretty closely with a million dollar transfer.
Yep.
If we cut that to 500,000, I think if we're going to rely on that in this plan, then there should be some specific strategy to reduce expenses by that amount, because we're not going to get an extra half million dollars in revenue just out of the blue. So, there, I, I think if we want to reduce that tax stabilization transfer, there has to be some method, some plan to offset that, and obviously, the, the obvious one is you raise the property tax, but I don't think that's...
It's kind of a transfer.
That's not what we want to do, because we said we wouldn't do that unless we had to for other reasons. So, I, I'm a little concerned that, that that changes these economics pretty substantially.
I completely agree with your logic, and, and we can definitely, you know, budget to that. I think there may be other reasons that come into the conversation, you know, things that we've already talked about, pay rates in particular, that are going to be affordable with budgeting.
Yeah, that's, I, I...
We've got a lot of moving parts running.
I, I just, I just don't see off, off, offhand, how we can, how we can reduce that transfer in that amount on a continuous basis. I just don't see that happening.
I, yeah.
Because we have a target, what's our target balance on it?
Eight and a half million.
Where are we at now?
Six and a half at the end of 2018, 19, six.
But that, that progress probably isn't repeatable without the transfer.
Right, right, yeah, but that's what...
We did a number of things to get to that point.
Okay, we need to keep that target in mind.
So, what I can do is I can redo these numbers with that assumption, and we can take a look at that, because you're right, it is going to make a big difference. So, the next thing I want to put in here real quickly is, then we looked at some options as Commissioner Frands mentioned, of what happens if we, if we cash finance some of these items instead of debt financing them? We looked at several options as far as, should we pay for this out of this fund, should we, you know, those types of things, and those are decisions that, that obviously you'll have to make as we go along with these projects. But basically, the assumption we made in this last, that this last option was that we would continue to finance everything out of the sales tax fund, however, we would take some option of paying cash when we had the availability to do that. So, the three, the three projects that we paid for cash were the trail, the one and a half million dollars preliminary design, or final design, and the water storage out of the sales tax fund. What we did do was, we took all this trail money that was allocated in the next year that we had previously substantiated at $50,000 a year, we took that away and said we were going to apply it to that $450,000 trail.
I'll ask a question. One of the things that caught my attention on this one was the total cost financed is substantially higher than on the other two options. I take it that you took these savings that this cash finance generated and put it into the principal amount of the project that could be done, instead of into the cash balance for, for the future?
That's right. And so, as, as what we did is, on, on all three of these options, if you look at the purple column, that is the total amount that we are anticipating spending on the River Project. So, my goal in looking at these tables was that number at the bottom was always going to be somewhere around that $22 million number. Whether we paid for it in cash, whether we paid for it in debt, that number was, was what we were gearing to. So, that, as that number changes, as we change that number, all of these can change, but that's, that was my target.
And that would explain why the Phase One construction, 2021, is now 6 million instead of...
Correct.
Okay, I got that.
So, as you can see, by doing that, by just changing some of that financing from cap, from debt to fi- to cash, we're still in the hole by the, by the time we get to pay off those fini- those debts, but we're about $1.7 million now when we get to 2038.
Of course, if you held the River Project at the same amount it was in Option Two, you would have more cash at the end of the period.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Sure. So, this, this slide is really just a summary of the information that we've provided in the previous summaries. Basically, what we, what we promised in the first table to the left, table on the right-hand side in the top, just kind of breaks down, okay, in those three scenarios, how much did we, how much could we have allocated in cash, or in project cost, which is the first column, what that total looks like comparing to that 22 million, what our shortfall would be in any of those scenarios, and what the property liability would be if we had to go to property tax for those, to pay those two particular issues and some debt that we had out there.
Now, I guess one thing to throw into the conversation is, if the prop, if the sales tax is not renewed in 2036 at all, it's not just the debt that we're going to have to cover. We have street programs.
We have major, major issues.
All the things that are dependent on that sales tax fund are defunded.
They go away. That's right. And that's what, why we have those all stopping at 2036, so our $3.2 million streets, our equipment and building facilities improvements, all of those things would then go away at that, when that tax goes away, because that's where that's all coming from. The bottom of those table here just kind of shows you what we've already spent or committed to on the project, the River Project. We have about $3.5 million of design that we've already financed, with the, the new project of trail and the water storage, and then we have the final design that we expect will be, will be starting sometime in 2020. So, the big question is, what can we get for that? And I know that's in our minds, what, what can we do in the River Project? So, that, we'll, we'll talk about that next week. We do want to talk about possibly starting at 1:30 next week, so that we have an opportunity to have that discussion, because there's a lot of information in the River Project. So, if we could get that started a little bit earlier, that would be wonderful. That's up to you all, though, and we'll, we can come back to that when we're done. The other thing in my one minute that I'm going to take from them, you wanted an update on where the Star Bond was? I'm sure you can. You won't mind. I, I wanted to just give this information out to you. As we talked last time, we did, we didn't make, we had not actually met our base at the end of 2019. That's the column that says December 19, the second number in each of those rows for state and local, is what we did not meet, however...
What does that mean?
That means that we set, when we started the Star Bond district, it's similar to a TIF. You establish a base value of what the sales tax was being generated at that point, that was 2015, with the retailers that were in the district at that time. We agreed with the state what that number was. So, all the money that, until we reached that amount, all that money goes, keeps going So all the money that, until we reached that amount, all that money goes, keeps going out to the entities, just like it would in a TIF.
And it's annual, it's not monthly. Cause they don't have a monthly baseline. So it goes out a hundred percent until you hit the baseline.
If we don't meet that bit, base, I don't understand. I would think the baseline would be what we would retain in anything over the base.
The baseline is what the entities retain.
But there's two things going on. Number one, with, with the baseline, it's an annual baseline. So you're not gonna meet, and they don't have a monthly number for January. So you don't know till you get somewhere out into the year.
I, I, I got that.
So then, secondly, yes, the goal is to meet and exceed the baseline. What Debbie's reporting is how we did in this first year, given business is not open, probably the timing of projects. And we ultimately exceeded it some, but not as much as originally projected.
Basically. So the state did come back and do an adjustment based on.
We'll, we'll talk about this separately because I don't understand the terminology.
Okay.
So what, what is our baseline? Our baseline is the million?
Our baseline for the state is one point four, our baseline is one point seven million dollars total. The first column on the left-hand side, if I had a pointer, I'd point.
Right.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that's, and so the, the first section of, that's on there is the state portion because their taxes different than ours, the one point four million. The three hundred and forty-eight thousand is the local portion, which is the city and the county portion. So as we move across to the right, the lo, the line above that base is what we collected in that month. And the number below is just taking that out of the base as we go along throughout the year. So when we got to the end of the year in December, which was our last distribution in December of twenty nineteen, we were short three hundred and eighty thousand dollars on the state side and we were short a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars on the local side for meeting that base.
Okay, three eighty, three eighty-seven is the.
However. Correct. However, since we didn't collect a full year because we started our, our Star Bond district in December, we didn't collect any, we didn't get distributed any money till February. You can see that in those collections in January, February. The state went back and said, any retailers in that district for January and February, we're gonna credit you back for that to, against the district. So that adjustment for the state was six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, which meant we, we met our base and we had an overage of two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars from the state.
That's the over.
The adjustment from the local side was a hundred and seventy-six thousand, which meant that we over, we got over our base by thirty-nine thousand on the local side. About two hundred and eighty thousand dollars total. That means that money will be transferred to the Star Bond account at the trustee, which would then be used for debt payment. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
The tan section.
Except I can't get my head around, I just can't get my head around the adjustment because we never really received that money.
The state is going to actually take out of their pocket that six hundred and forty-eight thousand dol, well, the portion, the two hundred and forty-eight thousand, and they're gonna send that money as if they would have set it aside.
As if they would have, as if they would have received it.
Yes, and the same thing with us, the portion that was the city.
But we didn't receive it and they didn't receive it.
They did receive it. They received it as a sales tax.
This is, this is, this is the original sales tax.
Yeah, they received it.
It's not a.
Then why don't we have it showing?
Because of the two-month lag time of when the district starts and when they reported it initially.
The sales tax is reported by a code that retailers submit when they submit their sales tax. So when they submit SAL, that means it's Salina City Sales Tax. It goes to a pool for the city of Salina and it comes to the city of Salina. When we created the Star Bond district, there's a new code, I don't know what it is, Stars SAL or something. When they submit their sales tax, that now goes into that pool of money. And that pool of money is then, if it's under the ba, under the base, it still goes out to the city and the county because it's, the base is the city and county and the state's money. It still goes out to them. What they find is not everybody filed in the right category.
And there's, there is a lag when you start in the sales tax.
And there is a lag. And so that's why they went back and said, that's, we'll pick up those two months and we'll give you credit for those two months, is basically.
And there's also some adjustment for businesses that through the year they have not been assigned.
Submitting it right.
But this means that the tail is gonna be an offsetting adjustment.
Yeah, they remember that in twenty years.
If they remember that.
Well, we, and we assume, we put that in our revenue purchases that we were only gonna collect through January, whatever that month was of twenty, whatever that year is. So I think they use that. But the tan section here is what we projected and how much we're off by that projection.
And, and if you do the math backwards for, with the, what we're off, based on the sales tax rate, it roughly equates to timing delays in projects.
So now, taking a little time from. So next week, we'll talk about the River Reno project, all of those pieces that go in there, what the status of that project is, what our funding expectations are, uh, what kind of the, the different face, phases look like, kind of, not in a lot of detail, but, um, just an overview. Um, so if you have any specific questions, we'll try to get that out to you this week, just like we have these packets so that we can, uh, get any question that you might have upfront.
Okay. Sorry for the delay, but.
No, you're welcome. Debbie's on top of it, so.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Today we have a presentation for you from Keller Taylor, Peter Zingoni and Susan Trappin. Uh, Spectra XP is our current operator and manager for Tony's Pizza Event Center. Uh, that presentation for you today is preparation for, to seek approval for new management agreements out of Petrick Commission being in their continued operation of the, uh, event center.
Guys, have anything going on this weekend?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here with you all today. Um, we're very excited to discuss a little bit of an update of everything that's been going on um, with the building and the great job that Susan, Keller and the team are doing at the building. Um, and really just to give a, a quick update on everything we go on and then focusing on the future, um, uh, for the, for the renewal. Uh, to start off, my name is Peter Zingoni. I'm the Vice President of Business Development for Spectra. Uh, really my primary role and responsibility within the organization is developing new business relationships amongst our three divisions, which we'll get into in a second. And really supporting the existing clients that we have, uh, on the ground, from Keller and Susan and the team. So, um, we have a brief overview, I think, uh, let's see if this is ready or.
Um.
We just may have to flip over to a different presentation.
Oh, yes, yep.
Yeah, if we start getting into sales tax, we, we're not the ones to talk about.
That one is Spectra.
We like to book concerts in your best. So while we're getting that PowerPoint started up, we, we've broken down a, a pretty, uh, uh, conversational type of PowerPoint and overview, really talking about, uh, the background, who we are, just to remind everybody about the different organizations and divisions that we have among Spectra. Uh, talk a little bit about our operating history and partnership with the city that dates back to twenty twelve. Um, and, and kind of some of the improvements that we see, some of the great events that are going on, part of the renovations. And we'll talk about our proposal of our new, uh, compensation structure, which talks about a pretty sizable investment to help fund those upgrades, to help drive bigger and better events, uh, to our great town here. Yeah, you know, you guys had the slides.
Yeah, we got it, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. Do you want, do you need a copy?
I'd memorize it, you know, and I'll take one of these ones if it's okay. Um, and, and really just quickly, the, the Spectra overview, I'll share to our friends in the audience too, is just a quick overview of who we are as an organization. So a lot of changes have happened, uh, with our organization the last few years. Um, we are ultimately owned by Comcast NBC Universal. Um, our majority shareholder is Ateros, which is a private equity fund based out of New York City, um, that really looks into ma, maximize and capitalize on a lot of sports entertainment investments. Um, they own a number of other entities, including Clearfield Sports, ING College, uh, Paciolin, which is the number two ticketing provider, um, and behind Ticketmaster. So really focusing on those leverage and synergies between the different organizations. Um, as you look at Spectra, uh, Spectra is now comprised of three very distinct divisions. We have our venue management division. We currently operate one hundred and eighty-nine buildings throughout the world, um, uh, very similar to this. So everything from arenas to convention centers to stadiums, performing arts centers, you name it. We handle everything from the booking, the marketing, the day-to-day operations, the finance. We act as an agent on your behalf. Uh, we also, uh, have a food and beverage division called Spectra Food Service and Hospitality. Uh, we are currently providing to two hundred and fifty clients primarily in North America, but geared around the sports and entertainment world, focusing on concession stands, high-end, uh, suite catering, uh, amongst some of the other venues. And then lastly is our partnerships division, which is really picking up steam over the last few years. Uh, we currently represent a hundred and twenty-five clients in the partnership division. We really specialize in the naming rights, hence the, uh, Tony Pizza deal that we reached about a couple of years ago, which is very exciting. And then Susan's gonna report on some of our other naming right partners that we've been, uh, very lucky to, 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 to lock down. And really, it's just another way to maximize the revenue potential. And really, the way we see it is we take a look and really separating ourselves apart from our competitors is a very holistic, comprehensive approach. We drive events, we put plugs in seats, and everything around that drives. And we focus on our marketing and sales efforts that really maximizes the ancillary revenue, the food and beverage revenue, the sponsorship. The more eyeballs in a venue, the more that sponsorship value increases. So we sold, we are the leader in the last, uh, five years. We sold more naming rights than any other firm throughout North America. We've landed about twenty-eight deals. Uh, so we're very excited about that and really, uh, putting the focus in those relationships within the organization, uh, to our ground-level buildings. Uh, flipping to the next page, just really high-level overview of kind of our partnership history and success that we've got. Uh, this partnership was created in twenty twelve through a very lengthy, um, diligent art pre-processes, um, at the time, um, which visited a lot of our similar-type venues, uh, trips to a lot of our other venues, um, and ultimately, uh, we took that property over. And again, just to rehash our goal and our mission statement, uh, I'll read just really quickly. To provide the residents of Central Kansas a place to meet, play, experience events that enhance living in Salina and the surrounding areas. Operate in a fiscally responsible manner, striving to reduce the building's operating subsidy to the taxpayers and consistently provide superior customer service to our patron. The reason I read that is because that is instilled in our DNA. Really driving as much of events, but focusing on what's important to the community, driving those outside dollars to kind of touch upon the sales district, uh, discussions and all of that. We're trying to be that community partner. Uh, to really try to drive those, um, uh, new events and new partners and, and patrons in town. Let me point over here, maybe if you have another clicker. You could just click, if you want, try to just click ahead, we could just follow along. So, um, really, some of the results that we have before you since takeover is we've decreased the net operating subsidy by fifty percent since our partnership of twenty twelve. We've overseen a three, thirteen point one million dollar remodel with a lot more up-to-date renovations coming, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. We did secure the one point two million dollar naming right, uh, for Tony Pizza, Tony's Pizza. Um, we just negotiated, Susan will head on this a little bit more in greater detail, the five hundred thousand dollar, uh, hall naming right, uh, with Great Plans Manufacturing. So we're very excited to get that up and all off the ground. And then, as we've mentioned, tying this back to our goal and our vision is that four point eight four percent, uh, overall customer satisfaction score out of five, uh, which we take a, a tremendous amount of pride in reinvesting, not only in our, uh, employees, but the operation itself. We always, we've got a saying in the industry, uh, happy customer really entices, um, repeat business. So we try to make sure not only with the patrons that visit our shows, events, uh, but also, uh, the, the promoters and the event planners that come as well. Pass it to Susan to talk a little bit more granular on the ground, if you can talk about our work chart.
Sure, I know most of us are familiar, but if not, I thought I'd remind you of something. My, uh, my name is Susan Trappin, I'm the General Manager, um, here at the facility at Tony's Pizza Event Center. I mean, you may not be as familiar with some of my other staff, so I wanted to take a minute to introduce you. Um, in my operations department, I have an Operations Director, Mike Highsmith. Reporting to Mike, I have an Operations Manager, Keith Hall. And I have an Events Manager, Casey Haney. Um, I also have a Director of Sales and Marketing, Margie Anderson, who's here today. Um, also, uh, in that department, I have, uh, Lee Gallion, who is a Sales Manager. She really, um, more concentrates on convention booking and sales, while Margie actually concentrates more on sponsorship, uh, for the building and the marketing, um, for the events that are, uh, held in the facility. Um, under that umbrella also is our Box Office Manager, Meredith Highsmith. We, um, as Pete mentioned, we have a full food and beverage department there at the center. Um, you probably know Alan Davis, our Director of Food and Beverage. But you may not know our new Chef, um, and Food and Beverage Manager, Taylor Copus, who is a local, um, here, who had moved away and went to culinary school and came back to Salina. So we're lucky to have him. And then, um, also in our umbrella, we have a Director of Finance, Joey Blaber. So, um, again, made up of ten full-time staff members. Um, and as you can see, primarily for a lot of events, we do rely on part-time and seasonal staffing as our events open flow. I wanted to do an overview, uh, for the arena renovations. You may not be as familiar with, um, since we took over the contracts, some things that had happened at the building. So in two thousand thirteen, actually a new sound and lighting system that was actually installed, um, in the arena, that was very important. Um, and, but in kind of that scope from two thousand fourteen to fifteen, um, we actually renovated the concourse area of the arena, um, kitchen, lobby, dressing rooms, uh, the upstairs, uh, restrooms at both concession stands. Um, one of the key things we did was, um, built a new box office. That's important for functionality. That allows us to actually separate events and hold two events in the building at once. We have a concert going on in the arena and we can have either a convention or a private party in the convention side, which really helps us maximize our revenue. Um, we also, uh, kind of had a complete overhaul of HVAC system in the arena. Um, upgraded the exterior, so that's probably one of the first things you noticed was the new paint and then landscaping, we're really happy and, and con, consistently get, uh, great comments and feedback of overall appearance of the building. In two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen, um, we got our most favorite marketing tool and asset, you know, Ohio Digital Marquee. Um, we love that. And upgrading, uh, the arena, uh, rigging steel, which was a lengthy process, but well-needed. Um, we did some landscaping on Ohio and installed the, uh, Salina Sculpture Tour Winter Slim on our south, uh, plaza for a fun community engagement, um, exercise there. So I'll turn it over to Keller and he'll talk a little bit more about it.
Commissioners, thanks for the time. I'm Keller Taylor. You guys, uh, I think all but one Commissioner saw me about eighteen months ago. Certainly appreciate the time today. I'm the District General Manager for Spectra with a count based in Garland, Colorado. Susan and I work hand in hand and really my job is to provide the, the link to all the resources that we've got all across the country. And I'll tell you, Susan, Margie and the entire team really leverage all that on a day-to-day basis on your behalf. And, um, so I, I wanted to start off before we let Susan kind of get even more granular on, on how we're providing financial results for you all. Um, I wanted to take a look at the account from a financial subsidy standpoint. So to us, this is bottom-line performance, so net, you know, net loss, if you will. Um, we're using twenty eighteen data because our fiscal years were off-sync. So this is the last audited financials that we have. Um, so we feel that's most appropriate to use as kind of a, a baseline for our discussion. Um, as you can see, we took over, as Pete mentioned, in, in twenty twelve. Um, historical performance for the venue, uh, based on the data that we've, we've gotten from the RFP process and, and other things, had you guys operating at up, up to one point one to one point two million and some years leading up to twenty ten. And so we've been able, through our efforts, and you see very quickly when we implement our practices and our food service operations and, and how efficient we've been there and driving diverse content, we've been able to drive that number on average down to about five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. The last, last year we finished up, uh, just over six hundred thousand. And, um, Susan and the team continues to do a great job of driving top line while staying really efficient with our indirect expenses, which has allowed us to, to really drive that, that number down.
So when you took over, the loss was six hundred and ninety-four thousand?
Uh, that was the first stub year, operating year that we operated.
Right, okay.
So that was twenty twelve, so that was our first year of operation?
So that's not a fifty percent decrease, that's maybe twenty.
Yeah, I think the.
A couple of slides back, you said you decreased it by fifty percent.
The, the data we've been, been using and, and we use as our reference point is, you know, that three to four-year window of performance before.
Before you took over.
I can't, I can't speak to what happened in twenty eleven specifically, unfortunately. I mean, we could, we could get data, um, and circle back on, on the performance that year. I know in talking with, with city staff, the historical performance was, was up over a million and, um, that's, that's traditionally.
Well, I can verify that.
Do, and, and I hate to put you on the spot, but do you have any sense of what the twenty nineteen numbers look like? I know you said that it's, it's, it's un-audited, but do you have like a, a ballpark that you're willing to share with us, what, what we're looking at?
I, I, I mean, based on discussions with Susan, obviously, you know, we, we discuss financial packets every month as you guys receive them as a city. So I think we're probably gonna be right in that six hundred plus or minus. I think we're gonna be sa, right in the same range.
Okay.
You know, as Susan will discuss on the event revenue side, there's, there's a risk reward, um, with promoting shows, of course.
Absolutely.
And, and as you see, and, and we'll see with, with our strategy moving forward, using our investment to reinvest in the hall to drive more food service business, both local social business or other type of business, as well as try to work with, with our partners at Business Salina to get more, uh, you know, citywide business. Uh, it's much less volatile than, than the, the concert landscape is. And that will allow us to continue to drive that, that subsidy down. Uh, so the next slide, uh, real quick, I, I, I think it's almost equally as important for you guys to know how you're performing and our team is performing as it compares to other Spectra venues. Um, you can, you can see the details here. We, we took a, a snapshot of some of our other multi-facilities, so, you know, some type of ex-hall or convention center space coupled with an arena. And you can see from, uh, both a net operating income as well as a revenue standpoint, um, we're doing very well, um, in, in our eyes from a Spectra standpoint. And you see where these communities are operating from, from a, a loss standpoint. But two specific examples, one of which isn't, isn't on there, is really, it really speaks to our, um, our ability to drive top-line revenue to affect bottom-line performance. And, uh, Enid, Oklahoma's one of them. Uh, I was actually the GM down there for, for about five years and, uh, was there pre-opening. And when we got things up and going, pre-naming rights, pre-in-house food operation that we were really able to drive more state business for, um, you know, we started up at about eight hundred thousand we started up at about 800,000, and we were able to drive that number, you know, under the last completed year down to under 450,000. And then one other example is Gomont, Texas. That was an operation we took over from another private manager and started up near $2 million. And we've been able to reduce that through really aggressive booking there, down to 1.33 million. So it just shows you that similar markets, we have the expertise, we operate in them every day. And it's very important for us to continue driving that top line through a little less risky revenue streams, and that allows us to drive more bottom line for you at the end of the day. I know that traditionally, when you're discussing parks and recs types items, you guys talk a lot about cost recovery. So you may see as the subsidy goes down, the cost recovery goes up, of course. So you can see from the data we have from the previous 10 years of city management, the facility is averaging about a 50% cost recovery. Since then, since we've been able to implement our strategies, we've driven that number up into the low 70s. Looking back at that last slide, you can see traditionally our facilities operate in the high 60s or low 70s. And with comparable data from other city-run organizations that myself and Chris Cotton and others have discussed, traditionally, at least the comparative data that he provided to us, they're running more in the 50, up to 60 range. So from a cost recovery standpoint, it's performing at a high level, too. In order to get there, it takes the team on the ground. And so I want Susan to talk a little bit more about the three main revenue streams, in events, food and beverage, and sponsorship.
Sure, well, first, it's easy to see when the time we took over the contract, the initial jump. Obviously, that is with us bringing more events into the building, providing more content. And you can see that that will ebb and flow a little bit. Obviously, with touring and concert content, as that ebbs and flows per year. But overall, I think we've shown some nice success in that area. The event day chart, I think, is what Keller kind of led to a minute ago. You look at that, you see that the most significant portion of our business is actually banquets and meetings, out of 64%. So that is important because that is low-risk, right? It's rental, it's food and beverage revenue. Unlike a concert entertainment portion of what we do, it's low-risk, high-reward. So that being the main piece of our business, followed by sports. We're lucky to have some tenant teams, have existing contacts that tracks with KESHA every year that all go into those numbers. And then family shows that have historically performed well in our market. And we're lucky to have those annual pieces of business, for the most part, every single year. As directly tied, obviously, to event revenue, this is a nice snapshot of our food and beverage revenue growth. Also, you see there's a little ebb and flow there, obviously, as events flow from year to year, as will the food and beverage revenue that's directly tied to it. But you can see that prior to Spectra taking over the management and running the food and beverage for the facility, the city ran it to a net revenue of 6% in 2006, a negative 31% in 2007, and a 2% in 2008. Over-average Spectra is actually about 40% for the last couple of years for net food and beverage revenue, which I think is significant growth. The next slide takes a peek at sponsorship revenue growth. I double-checked and triple-checked and quadrupled the numbers. But we have had great success, you know, there's obviously a lot of key factors there. One of those is, you know, the support that we received from Spectra corporate as far as selling sponsorships and making those partnerships and helping us close those. Some of those are going to be directly tied to the remodel of the facility, which has also helped make my job a little bit easier. You'll see that jump from 2016, obviously, to 2017, when the Tony's Pizza Event Center renaming deal happened. But you'll see even from 2017 to 2019 that we've had significant growth also. And worth noting that the most recent naming rights partnerships with Great Plains that we closed is actually, didn't come into contract until January of 2020. So those numbers are not even reflected in this chart. So I'm excited to take this, to see what this goes to the following year. But overall, it's been 755% increase in sponsorship revenue, which obviously decreases our operating costs. Pete mentioned it earlier, as far as our company mantra, if you will, as far as customer experience. Spectra believes in a great experience on every event, great relay, explore, address, and thank customers for coming to our events. Customer satisfaction is always at the top of our priority list. We measure that success post-event with our clients by sending out surveys and letting them write cards, if you will. As you can see from the chart to the right, we have very impressive numbers in all the categories. And I thought, instead of just giving you an average, you can kind of take it, we'll look at each of the category to see how we rate as far as customer satisfaction is concerned. So a few areas that we've identified for opportunities we see for improvement for the building. One of that main, those main focuses is this space formerly known as Heritage Hall, which is now Great Plains Management Convention Hall, that was last, last one for two months ago. Some needs I feel in those areas, A, our new China flatware, various service ware. To take ourselves to the level of, some of our, honestly, are competing venues in Manhattan, in Wichita, that we are primarily competing with for convention business. It's an important upgrade to take us to that caliber of events that we want to attract. Flooring is something that we have identified as a need. Interior and exterior doors, the current ones we have do not lock, which is a bit of a safety concern. Paint, AV equipment, AV equipment we are currently using, it's very outdated, unfortunately. It's VGA for familiar. Everything now is typically running HDMI, we have converters. But as you blink and you have a new cellphone or a new TV, this type of technology is also changing on that fast pace. So we know that that is going to be a continued need, even moving forward. But at this time, is definitely an area of focus. And the downstairs restrooms were actually remodeled, I believe, in 2010. We, and we'll take a look as we get a little bit further in the presentation, but those, since those are actually the facilities that is used most when we have convention business, not the upstairs ones that were done, need to be upgraded, if you will, to the same level as the rest of the lobby and the convention space. And upstairs, I followed a refresh with some paint and new carpet and lighting fixtures, but definitely new projectors that also kind of go back to those AV equipment needs. And again, we mentioned that we have actually just closed a 10-year deal with our friends at Great Plains Manufacturing for the hall naming right for the convention center. And Keller's going to do just more of a high-level comparison to some competing venues that we compete with specifically for convention and tourism business.
So as you look at the facility, you guys have made the right decision to continue to reinvest in our areas, right? We, as your operator, want to look at how you continue to push that forward. And we truly think renovating the Great Plains Hall is the way to do it. As you look across the landscape, both here in town, you know, more hotels and barns are coming into play, as well as regionally, like Susan said, in Wichita and Manhattan. Facilities that have, you know, great-looking spaces, high-quality food service, service ware. We are in a position where we've got an opportunity to up our game, not to, not only to take care of the great customers that have been there for a long time, but also to elevate their experience and win new business, both here locally and at a statewide level. On the next slide, you'll see just an example. So current table settings, based on information we have, I think they were purchased maybe late 80s, early 90s, potentially. You know, for us, our standard setup was the setup on the right. That's actually from Eden, Oklahoma, using our Spectra-negotiated buying power with providers for stemware, flatware, China, chafing dishes. The whole experience will be elevated dramatically. And we've got estimates and quotes in here that can give you the order of magnitude on that. But the good news is, our investment's going to put the bill on all that. So while we allow your guests and our guests to have a better experience, it will actually drive more food and beverage, which as we've talked, you know, is very efficient, you know, with 40% drop into the bottom line. So as we drive more of that business, more drops of the bottom line overall.
When did Salina's Hilton Garden Inn open? Was that like, maybe a Joanne question, 2018?
No.
17?
Seventeen.
17? I was just wondering, I mean, has that had an impact on your ability to get the smaller conventions or, you know, the more reliable sources of revenue in that you're competing now with them?
Yeah, there are several pieces of business that we're competing with them directly just here on a local level. And on that last slide, we did purposely mention the Hilton Garden Inn that is located in Manhattan.
Right.
Because they also compete for some regional business and are currently in the process of adding even 40 more hotel rooms and an additional, I don't know if I know the top of it.
At least 10 or 15,000.
Thousands of square foot of convention space also. So to be, to make themselves even more competitive for some of those regional events, too.
I got you, so these are investments that, you know, like with the redesign and the flatware and the, all of that, I mean, will that make you competitive? I mean, do you think?
I believe it will, because those are, if you go way back to the chart that we have, me, too, but the customer satisfaction.
Yeah.
When we look through the customer surveys that we get, we see that we are a little lower than we like to be in food and beverage. And we get good comments on our actual food, but those have been noted in, I mean, very specifically in client surveys as feedback.
What meeting planners and event planners are looking for is fancy material, across the board. I mean, the convention level, the conference business is going to a whole nother level these days.
Oh, yeah.
Across the country.
Yeah.
So you think your food and beverage score would improve if you were...
I absolutely do.
Enhancing that experience there. Is price an issue with the food and beverage?
So I think that by elevating that experience as a whole, I think we're priced very competitively right now. But I think by elevating that experience, it will actually allow us to merit a price increase, which right now is a little bit of a challenge. So we don't have the look to be able to merit the price that we would like that some of those other area venues are being able to merit a higher price point.
You know, a lot of these markets, too, we, you know, we understand local groups have budgets, right? So normally, it's the reverse. We don't start with the menu, we start with the budget. We start, you know, if you have $10,000 for your thousand-person event, well, can we make 10 bucks a headwork somehow, right? With our experience, with being good stewards of city money and city assets. So I can tell you, from being in a market like that, having talked to Susan for years, it's more so that discussion of how we create a great experience for your budget versus, here's our catering menu, and then we walk away and hope we get the business, you know? So real quickly, on some of the renovation options, I think as you, you know, as all of us go to conventions and experience large-market convention centers, you have a pretty continuous flow of theme and look throughout the venue. You know, the restrooms are one opportunity for us on the lower level to do that.
If I make a comment, it came up on a finance discussion, and I'm kind of remembering now, the first bond issue we did had to do with renovating the meeting rooms upstairs and the restrooms upstairs. And at that time, we discussed the need to renovate the downstairs restrooms, but did not have the resources.
I think that...
And that is, you can see that in the comparison between the two.
I think the downstairs renovation, the downstairs bathroom is actually renovated.
Pardon?
The table service was also a big discussion at that time, too.
Yeah, that's right. The downstairs bathroom, I think, was renovated before we had a theme identified. And then we came back and identified the theme for the upstairs, and we were elected to go back, and we...
Yeah, and I don't know when the downstairs were done, but that was well before we got the upstairs. It wasn't a part of the same project.
No, not at all.
So...
Right.
Yeah, so our hope is to provide a continuous experience with the same level of amenities throughout the venue. Obviously, you guys have reinvested, we've got options in front of us to do a refresh in some of the meeting rooms upstairs. Overall, they're in great shape, based on your investment prior to the last remodel. Put some new carpets, some fresh paint on the walls, we'll go a long way to match those recently redone bathrooms, too.
Not to bog down the conversation too much, but Susan's right. We had a lengthy conversation about food and beverage and all that at the time. I think the only thing that we were able to pull off was chairs. And if you remember those old chairs, they weighed about 60 pounds, and you felt like you were going to slide up. So the chairs in and of themselves were expensive, and they were an improvement. But that's all that we could swing.
Yeah, we didn't do the tables or anything else.
Well, to give you some real data, I actually met with two local contractors and one regional contractor to get us some bids for the suggested renovations. So I tried to put it in categories for you to just simplify the understanding. So what we're recommending as far as food service is concerned, again, the new table service plate, stemware, that does include some buffets and actual serving items that are quite dated throughout the building. And I know Keller mentioned it earlier, but a really key component for us getting what we want from that is, we're really going to leverage Spectra's buying power. You know, obviously, we're through our corporate office to get discounts and employee, you know, employer pricing for us. And Heritage Hall, we actually quoted, went after meeting with several contractors, went round and round about what we all thought was a great fit for our building, where we ended with some pricing was on a really high-end stained concrete floor. That actually was done in the arena. And so, but again, for consistency, we'd like to kind of mimic that or mirror that, maybe even a higher level in Heritage Hall. The functionality of our room, it allows us, I would love to have carpet, but I can't imagine cleaning carpet after Equafest. There's 12 inches of dirt in the arena, and people are walking out through the full facility. So something that gives us a nice look, but is more maintenance-free and easier for us to clean and be able to do those variety of events and trade shows and still do an upscale banquet. Again, with the new technology in AV. New paint and just locking doors. The current doors that we have, you actually have to put like a large bar on from the inside. It looks a little prison-esque to keep people in and safe. And the upper-level meeting rooms and hallways, just a refresh is a great work. It's really just a little modernization here with some new paint and colors and carpet schemes to match those other areas that we talked about. And again, the main level restroom, which is a significant portion of that budget, but definitely needed when you're talking that convention audience. That's very important that they have those facilities, and they're consistent with the rest of the building. I do want to note that coming in, just a pinch over of our investment, that these were quotes directly from contractors. So I'm fully confident in that if approved, we go out to the RFP process, that we'll be able to get in under the process or the price level itself. So I'll turn it back to you in a second.
They're portable basketball floors, is there portable carpeting for areas that...
Actually, there is. We have, I actually even visited with Joanne a little bit about that last week. We had very few requests over the past even three-year span for carpet. It is optional, I've actually been myself to a convention recently where they had a large area carpet that they put out as specifically at a trade show. So yes, it is an option.
There's actually a tile product that's out there right now. It's good for permanent structures, we can get a spill, you can easily replace it. So the cost to maintain it is good, but it's also to flip, almost like the sport courts you see in the amateur sports world. So it's incredible without the products that are coming in. And part of our diligence in running that RFP is to evaluate all those options. So getting into all this renovation projects, and as we saw, we worked very hard with our team at corporate as well, really doing the cost estimates, and Susan did a great job doing it. We got that $500,000 need and kind of backed it into our updated proposal, which we have in front of here today, which commences with a 10-year term renewal. It would maintain our base management fee somewhere in the tune of where we started in 2012, at $125,000. There would be CPI increase annually. And then what also, in addition to our base management fee, we would have some different types of incentive benchmarks. Mutually agree to find incentive benchmarks, which would be capped at 115%, which I know is important to the city. And we've identified those metrics. And then using that $500,000 capital investment to hopefully fund all those renovations that we just proposed in front of you today.
If I could offer two clarifications, this is very, very, very similar to the current deal with the exception of the term, the base fee, the incentive fee, and even the structure that you mentioned, very similar to what we're doing today. I just want to clarify, the capital investment is on the... I just want to clarify, the, the capital investment is on the part of Spectra. It's not reallocation of the Great Plains sponsorship. It is their willingness to invest.
That money is your money. You have full discretion of where that, those monies are spent, dollar per dollar. We, as your partner, will just make the recommendations to where we feel will be most efficient. And again, we, we talked a lot about that today. You know where our, our focus will be moving forward and trying to stay ahead of the game, competition.
Is there an incentive fee structure in place at this time? Okay.
Yeah. And it's, because it's bond financed and because of some of the IRS regulations, it's more complicated than any, I think any of us would like. Ideally, we'd like it to be, you show results, you get, you get a cut. But because of the, the tax exempt bond financing status, it's, it's, it's more complicated that one hundred fifteen percent based on performance measures and customer satisfaction measures.
So this will follow into the same formula as the one you're discussing.
It'd be very similar, yeah.
It still has the same caveat.
And having ninety-five percent of our clients' municipalities and city agencies are very fluid in the IRS regulations. So we have been able, and the IRS regulations have loosened up a little bit since 2012, which has allowed us to get creative with the deal structure that you see before you right now. And then really just wrapping up, as you can see that subsidy, we really think that we can take that time of operation, continue to decrease that tax payer subsidy and, and continue to, to offer a second to none customer experience and driving great events to the Tony's Pizza Event Center.
Another clarification related to that, the current agreement and the proposed format would have what's referred to as a target operating margin. And so it, it reflects that as a dollar amount. We've talked about the numbers that they're projecting there. And that term can be shortened if they, they aren't performing in terms of target operating margin. So we, as the owner operator, have the, the ability to notice them up if we're not satisfied.
When does the current contract expire?
We're, we're currently under a, a two-year option. But with the opportunity in front of us with Great Plains deal, as well as, you know, the food and beverage business in general, I think, you know, we have the opportunity now to address both fulfilling that agreement as well as enhancing that level of service.
Was that a two-year agreement or a two-year option on a loss?
I think it's a three-year with a two-year renewal, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
And where are we in that two-year renewal? When does it run out?
End of February twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so it's, you're just started the two-year period.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, this has been a, a very, you know, collective collaborative discussion with, with city leadership for a few months now and really identifying where, where there's opportunities for us to drive more bottom line for you and where we, as a company, can help reinvest in that experience.
Just to go back to something that Commissioner Frands asked about, that was, he wasn't looking at my notes, but I was writing down the very question that he had asked earlier. And I'm just looking at the graph. If you look at that graph, something was driving the, that subsidy down before the agreement in two thousand. Was that eleven or twelve?
Two thousand twelve is my answer.
Twelve, okay. It looked like that momentum continued down for another year. And that curve is, as curves goes generally kind of flat. So do you anticipate that five hundred twenty-five thousand is, is low as this subsidy's ever gonna get and?
I think if we could go back to the comparison benchmark slide, that's why we wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot of, you know, how we're seeing other facilities operate, you know, in similar size and similar, you know, size, population, size, venue, capacity. We certainly feel like we have the opportunity in front of us to continue to drive that number down. You know, I, I, I think we've got the opportunity to continue to drive it down towards five hundred thousand. As you, as you see with a lot of these venues, they're, you know, they're operating at much larger losses than that. And so for your market size, given the total revenue that we're at now, I think we're, you know, in our opinion, in our professional opinion, obviously with, you know, with a lot of scope behind us, we, we think things are good now. And we think with the opportunity in front of us, they're going to continue to, to get better.
But now, does that mean, and I realize, you know, a public arena like this, what I've been told, it's not my area of expertise, usually they don't turn in actual real profits. I mean, is this as good as, because it seemed like several years ago, I didn't think that we had projections that ultimately that subsidy would drop lower than what I'm saying here. I mean, if this is as good as it ever gets, then we're paying you to keep things the way they are as opposed to making them better. Now granted, five hundred thousand dollars, fifty years from now will be worthless, but, you know, expenses will go up too.
Go ahead. I, you probably have the same.
The number you're thinking of may be the target operating margins that we identified at the outset.
Yeah.
We had a lot of conversation about not knowing how to pick that number until we got some experience somewhere.
And I think we, we went in it with the goal of getting to maybe a half a million dollars at one point. Four to five hundred thousand, I think was-
I think it might have been a Form ninety-five in that number.
Was, was target. And I will say that, that million dollar year was actually a little bit unusual because we had been running probably six to eight hundred thousand typically, maybe more towards the eight hundred more recently. And then it spiked to a million for maybe a year or two. And that was what provided the, what was it? Impetus, the encouragement to, to seek somebody who had some, because the market in this industry had, had changed between, you know, our, when we had the center to start with and then into the two thousands, obviously concerts aren't as big a deal in this size venue anymore. And so it was, the market was changing. And we, at that time, just started talking about whether it might not make sense to hire somebody who has multiplying power, who has marketing power and so on.
And this is purely speculation on my part. He may recall better than I do. But I'm not so sure that in that time period when we identified that, when we went through that process, we didn't kind of pull back in terms of programming and investment in the facility. And so part of that savings may have been kind of a de facto mothballing or, or just kind of avoiding investment.
We went through some staff changeover that was contributed to this and probably also contributed to the loss because we'd lost the manager and there was an interim in place. And so I, and I think we did probably-
And I know when we took over in twenty twelve, having talked to the initial GM, Chris Byrd, I mean, we did a lot of hiring at the onset.
Yeah.
Too. So that, that was our assumption. We certainly don't want to make assumptions based on, on your management at eleven. But we, you know, we, so we used, that's why we used the data from, you know, the last couple of years before that as a-
Because, because that one, one or two years was, was exceptionally high. I remember that. We were kind of aghast.
I remember going into it being very interested in Spectra's ability to kind of put together a maintenance plan and a budget and facility assessments because we had a sense that we were guilty of deferred maintenance.
Well, and we were, we were talking about major improvements to the facility. That's when the arena renovations and so on, when that discussion started, so.
So without diving into it more, that's about all I can offer.
Do you focus more on growing the business, charging more for the current business, hoping it repeats? Or lowering the expense? I know it's all, gotta be all three.
You know, it's, it's interesting. Susan and I were recently talking about rates, and they did very stagnant. You know, we have not increased rates in, in quite a few years. And in fact, you know, a very typical revenue metric in our industry on ticketed events is a facility fee that hasn't been, since it was instituted in twenty twelve, we haven't raised it from two dollars. So those are suggestions that we would work through with staff to, you know, show more opportunities. But our projections don't account for any, any type of price increase. It's, it's an acquisition of business and, and growing the current, the current business.
And just to be clear, they have considerable discretion as the operator in terms of price setting. Well, exercise a lot of, you know, oversight over food and beverage pricing and that type of thing.
And, and we, and we would work with staff, even, even though that's our contractual right. I mean, it's a very collaborative process, just as the procurement process for the potential renovation of the hall would be. I mean, we want your input, we value your input. At the end of the day, it's your asset. We, we want to make sure you're happy with it.
We also had a conversation about the, you know, fluctuations in event revenue. And the thing that caught my attention is, there's a couple of events that just intentionally don't come back to the market year after year, they come every other year.
Yeah, probably one of the easiest examples of that is the Harlem Globetrotters. They're about every two or three year rotation for our market size. And I know seventeen was a specific year where we happened to have a really full concert. And then there were several of those that, in that cycle, that buying cycle, if you will, all landed in that year as well.
Yes, I, I just, when I look at the, the curve, I just, you know, what we are incentivizing you to do, keep things from getting worse, or it's keeping the same. Is our subsidy doesn't go up? Or is our expectation that line's gonna keep going? Long, as I know what our realistic expectation is.
We've had conversations for quite some while, quite a while, that it's not going to go to zero. There is just some operational level that is what's reasonable to expect. And we've struggled with exactly what that is, but it seems like it's settling in at that happening.
Does that, does that subsidy decrease also include the management fee in it?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
We treat that as not breeding expense.
Right.
And I think something else to note, you know, to, to a couple of your questions, you know, this doesn't really measure the secondary impact, right?
Right.
So, and about like Equafest and all the, the state high school activities in the building. I mean, you know, we're incentivized to drive hotel room nights through our incentive fee. Obviously, we're capped, but we have an incentive to, to drive those. But obviously, they're great for the building, but they're also great for the community. So while it is, you know, and we see this in lots of markets, it's, it's a quality of life initiative for your community, but it's also an economic driver for getting people to town and tourism. So our, when our partners that visit Salina, you know, we work day in, day out with them to try to drive more business and retain the, the conferences that bring lots of people to town that are eating and staying and shopping.
I don't, I don't have the most recent examples from Equafest. That's nice because it's a new event. We're in the process of kind of gathering that data and analyzing that. But what I do have is the most recent numbers from wrestling weekend, the weekend before. And so to give you a little perspective there, we worked with Visit Salina to kind of come up with those numbers. And so this year, we actually hosted, it was the first ever girls state tournament in the country. So all classes, so we had an extra day, two days of boys state wrestling for the four A level and then a very large scale youth tournament. So all, just those four days, the economic impact of those four events was one point three million dollars and was upwards of over, I think, fifteen hundred hotel rooms just for that one weekend. I'd love to see once we get the Equafest numbers processed too. But like I said, you know, I mentioned the convention and banquet meetings is obviously a larger part of our business that we do. A lot of those are going to be directly tied into multiply, multiply the events, generating that hotel tax and then our, all of our sports events fee that we do throughout the year.
Is a ten-year contract normal? Is that what you kind of have with your others?
Yeah, traditionally, that's the new, the last couple of years, it started off, I mentioned the, the easing of the IRS regulations. So twenty twelve, it was really governed by five with five-year extensions. This now has given us the ability to extend our contract, therefore allowing us to recoup our investment, but also giving, so you're not coming out of pocket for that investment. So we've tried to take advantage of that term in the form of cash capital contributions.
And I, and I guess are there triggers in there that allow either one of us to terminate that contract?
There is.
Mike mentioned the benchmark earlier.
Yeah, so the, the target operating margins, which our suggestion would be the, the five markers on the far right of that graph, there is a mechanism that if we miss two years in a row, that technically you, you all could leave with, of our, of our duties.
In the last ten years, relative to the competition that's out there, both public and private, would you say, you know, the, the number of events that are potentially haveable, at least is, what's, are there more of those? Are there less of those? What's that marketplace like?
We're, we're in an interesting space in our industry right now. With the shift of the music industry, concerts and artists need to go on tour. The days of record sales, CD sales are gone, so they need to tour. So we, as an organization, we are investing back corporately in booking. So we now have an established booking department across the country with a couple of individuals that focus solely on jumping on those tours, concert tours, meeting planners, to get involved very early on to help tour them and steer them, if you will, with the promoters, event planners. We have a very similar mechanism in our convention conference space as well. So Susan's on, you know, kind of wears two hats in that matter. And working with Keller on the regional scale of what other buildings in our marketplace, whether it's Topeka, Kansas, whether it's Enid, who's kind of, kind of touring and jumping in the next.
It seems like there's a lot more Hilton Garden Inn kind of opportunities around.
It's a casino concert.
Casino, yeah.
Yes, that's right. That's what we've really seen over the last even ten years, since, even since we took over. Regionally, our landscape has changed so much with the addition, obviously, there's probably been a casino in Topeka that's pretty aggressive, Kansas Star, even Oklahoma, that are very aggressive with concerts. I always kind of tease people, you know, I measure concert dollars, we look at it per cap, you know, how much they paid for a ticket and their food and beverage rest, uh, revenue and how much that person is worth to me as a patron, right? Think about that at a casino. I wish I had that.
You're not gonna want less people in.
Yes. So it all kind of ties back to why we feel, you know, for us to move forward and continue to increase that subsidy, the conservative and the, the safe place to do that is really in our convention and meeting business because it's going to be less volatile as far as competition.
Plus it drives that secondary impact in the community too.
Exactly.
So it's, it's the win-win.
If I could, I'd add that, you know, earlier I mentioned they have discretion over pricing. The way the contract's set up, city manager is your designated approves contract offers. And so to me, that's stressful on three levels. One is just the risk reward that Susan mentioned. Believe it or not, the volume, they, they'll be, I lose track of how many offers might be in consideration or out all at the same time. And then the third reason it's stressful for me is I don't know the market that well. I know what I like, but they're allowing them to help me figure out, you know, the likelihood of success.
Without divulging trade secrets, do you still coordinate with Staples Theater as far as that booking that might be too big for them, but too small for your arena? I mean, do you all talk or?
We try as best as we can, but I think it is definitely worth mentioning that we're in competitive market. Not, not only with, on some shows, not all, with the Staples Theater at Loughley, but more directly with even Hartman Arena out of Wichita or Ginnie's in Topeka or even Kansas City that we're competing with for, for that content specifically.
I, I think to, to speak to that in a little more detail, we, we get lumped in with Wichita here. Topeka gets lumped in with Kansas City. To Nashville and LA, those agents, it's all the same to them, right? It's about TV market, it's about media. How is that? That's, that's, that's your DMA for, for their intensive purposes. So, you know, for us, we're, we're making sure and trying to take opportunities like, like pizza, to go from Enid to Salina to Ralston Arena in Omaha, or Sioux City to Topeka to Wichita Falls, Texas. You know, so depending on the size of the artists, depending on, you know, traffic in the market. So I think there is collaboration for sure. And we, and we talk with the city manager and the, and the team a lot about that. And we're committed to that moving forward, making sure that, that at the end of the day, we're doing what's right for the entire community. Because if, if, if the theater's got a country show, it doesn't make any sense for us to book a country show the next day, right? It's not good for the market. So it's, it's a cohesive decision with the city manager on what we go after when. And at the end of the day, if it's an at-risk event, you know, we, we talk with, with the team and we seek approval on, on that before it even, you know, goes in. But like, like Mike said, I mean, we, you know, we may have placed forty offers last year and only, you know, we get a handful because of a variety of reasons. They don't come this far west. They don't come this far south or north or wherever they think they do.
Casino, a lot of them, three hundred percent more.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't want to work that day. I found that one before too.
I, I think there's another factor, and that is in addition to us and whoever the competition may be, there's an agent in all that who has their own best interests in mind, and they're going to maximize their interest. And they steer their client towards what's beneficial.
Yeah, and our goal at the end of the day is to provide good content and an affordable price for the entire community, right? So if a, if an act costs a little more, but they're going to sell three thousand tickets and we can provide that at a lower ticket price, then in my opinion, it belongs to Tony's Pizza Event Center. If it's a, if it's a different level of act that prefers a theater, has history with the market in that, you know, facility or whatever the case may be, then maybe they end up there. But, you know, to us, we're going to keep fighting for you at the end of the day. But, you know, to us, we're going to keep fighting for you at the end of the day, and I think long-term, we're going to continue to reinvest in the whole experience and the food and beverage experience and the hall, and I think that's what will drive net revenue for you at the end of the day.
What set of tax money does the subsidy come out of?
Transit guest tax.
All right, so this is basically, it's a known expense that we have, I mean, it's just like paying the light bill, I mean, you know it's gonna...
It fluctuate depending on performance, but yeah. The other thing I was going to note is, we kind of have, riding two horses at the same time, we just got done investing in the Staples Theater in the downtown as well. I don't know how you balance all that, but...
Oh, but again, the two avenues are very different.
Yeah, it's, you know... Well, in the marketplace, you got to keep upgrading everything all the time.
And we have a tax bill that has to be paid for the downtown streetscape, which is fueled by people coming downtown. I mean, they'll come downtown after they leave Tepec as well, but I hope they don't just get in a car and go back home.
Stay at the new hotel. Commissioners, I think you had three options, you could do nothing and let the contract continue as it is, and we've been having conversations about getting our budget synchronized, getting their budgets synchronized to our budget process, and so we'd want to address that regardless. You could say that you like what you see and ask staff to bring you a revised contract for consideration, and you could say that you want to do some type of competitive selection process. I think, given the current contract, renewal of the contract, the working relationship, I think you could justifiably say that, well, one point, and then we jumped in so quick, I didn't get to explain, that Chris Cotton had knee surgery last week, so he's not here this week, and one of the points that he made in our conversations is, you can expect a lag in performance if we transition away from Spectra into some other operator, there's going to be a learning curve there, and I think that's a point worth making as well.
Do the, these final numbers, you mentioned it included the management fee, does it include the set of things?
It does, it does, yeah. Both management and incentive are treated as operating expenses, I guess.
So you would bring the contract back to us for approval under a...
Yep, so we've had conversations about what changes might be needed and how to make this work. The other thing I would tell you, and we talked about this a little bit before, the Great Plains sponsorship of Heritage Hall has, and the current contract provides that under certain parameters which it met, they can enter into those sponsorship agreements that didn't have to come to you. It did include a provision that Great Plains needs to be satisfied in investment in, I don't want to say rehabilitation, but remodeling.
Refresh.
Refreshing Heritage Hall. Didn't go into the level of detail of the numbers that Susan provided you, and so I was comfortable going forward with that for a couple of reasons. Number one, the latitude was there in the agreement, and if this, if this didn't come together, we could make the renovations for the value that we were getting out of their sponsorship. And then this scenario, there's a willingness to invest and maximize that.
One question, I was reading this a couple of days ago, I hope this doesn't, I'm not suspicious of you one bit, what's your reason for putting the $500,000 in?
We, traditionally, it's part of the industry standard, industry norm, is we typically come with a capital investment in all of our management contracts, and really for us, it's to do exactly what we discuss, discuss, is help to increase revenue production with that investment, putting it to very specific earmarked projects. So for that, that will help us increase and selfishly earn more incentive. And we structured the incentive, as you can see, is a little bit more detailed than the previous slide. You know, we don't earn incentives on food and beverage unless we achieve at least 500K. So we're kind of, we have separate benchmarks, similar thing with the 15% on their event revenue in excess of 300K. So this doesn't start from ground zero, this is us earning a little bit before we start earning. So the incentive for the 500K, kind of making a circling bag, is exactly that, to help us incentivize to grow top line revenue.
What would be the wishes, what would be the wishes of the commission moving forward?
So I would say if this has the recommendation of the staff, then I'm comfortable with it.
I think...
We'll get the contract, so.
I think Spectra's done a really good job, and yeah, if we, when is this scheduled to appear on our agenda?
We could have it back.
Because I noticed it referenced a March one day.
We could have it back in a couple weeks, next week or two.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Well, having worked here in a day when we were losing a million dollars a year, you know, 600K looks pretty good.
I'm zeroed in on the number below 600, though.
Yeah. Commissioner Davis.
Go for it.
Okay, we'll bring that back before us here in a few weeks.
If it helps at all, they may mention of it, but our first selection process, it will be around, Jason Gage, the city manager at the time, and myself, and Jacob Wood, who was the interim manager.
I wasn't going to tell him that. Here we've lost a million dollars, Jacob's in charge.
Well, we went on a driving tour.
Hey, I'm the starter.
We just know we don't want Jacob anywhere near this.
It was a lot sneaker when I was here.
And we didn't just look at Spectra menus, we looked at the landscape of providers, and that's how we made the selection of Spectra in the first place.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.